Everybody else is off, so.
Everybody else is off, so.
Pulling up the blue light.
Oh, there you go.
Blue, blue skid.
No, you wanted to get off your red dot.
Get off? Why is it so slow? Respond.
Okay. All right. We will start by calling the West Hartford Town Council Community Comment Meeting at 7:00. We're calling the meeting in order, and we're going to start with roll call. Councilor Barnes is absent. Let's see. Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Mr. Dodge?
Here.
Ms. Fay?
Here.
Ms. Kerrigan? Mr. Sweeney is absent. Mr. Matthews? Mr. Winograd?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
That's it. Thank you, Ms. Brinney. Okay. So, we are here to receive communications from Tracy Wilson, town historian, and 5th grade students from Renberg School to discuss their Witness Stone projects. Please come on up. Mic is auto, autumn. You will start talking, and it will start recording.
Good evening. Mayor Cantor, Deputy Mayor Kerrigan, and town counselors. Thanks so much for giving time this evening to these students to talk about their research and what we call, in social studies, informed action. How does a town come to terms with its colonial past born in slavery? One way is to witness and recognize people who were enslaved and who lived here, but whose names have all but been lost to the historical record. The colonial leaders here supported and participated in the powerful racially oppressive institution of slavery in this town. The first two ministers, military leaders, and at least four moderators of the church that ran the government here in the 18th century were all slaveholders. In just two weeks, through the Witness Stones West Hartford Project that has guided the historical work of more than 650 students from King Philip, Cedric, Bristow Middle Schools, Conard High School, Solomon Schechter, Renbrook, and Kingswood Oxford's Upper School, we will install 10 stones in the Old Center Cemetery to commemorate and witness the lives of Chris, Paige, Pompey, Ben, Hercules, Hannibal, Caesar, Simone, Bristow, and Prout. These men and one woman were enslaved by Colonel John Whiting, Captain Thomas Hosmer, John Whitman, and John Whitman Jr., and Thomas Hart and Sarah Whitman Hooker. And, I would argue, to really understand our town's history and these town leaders who are also slaveholders, we need to understand as much as we can about the lives of those they enslaved. I hope you can attend one of the four ceremonies to be held on May 29, 30, and 31. If all goes well tonight, some students may be speaking at the Memorial Day Ceremony on May 27 as well. Today, as the town historian and representing the Noah Webster House and West Hartford Historical Society, I join my colleagues and Witness Stone Project Directors Liz Devine and Denise DeMello, who are in the audience, to bring you three 5th grade students from Renberg School in West Hartford. They will testify that a man named Prout, enslaved by John Whitman Jr., who lived at 208 North Main Street, should have his name placed on the Connecticut Veterans Memorial installed here in 2006. The memorial stands on the site of the West Division of Hartford's First Meeting House built in 1713. Right now, there are 26 names on the slab which honors these men who died during the Revolution. These students want Prout's name etched to join those whose names have been part of our history for many years, and certainly for the last 13 years. Over the last six weeks, as part of the Witness Stones West Hartford Project and their Renberg Social Studies Language Arts and Art Classes, these 5th graders have been studying the art of Titus Caphar, colonial history, the history of Fort Ticonderoga in the Revolutionary War, the history of this town, the West Division of Hartford, and the particular history of Prout and John Whitman Jr. So, let me now call up the three Renberg students. Actually, one of them is still in transit, so hopefully she'll come flying in. But I'd like to call up Chee Dee Moameka, who's a student of Jane Johansson, Tristan Boltimer, a student of Tracy Robbins, and I think we have a third who's going to come up. And what's his name, Chee Dee? The boy's coming up. And Mason Gifford. Okay.
Can you just, can you repeat the names one more time?
Well, maybe.
They should state their. That would be helpful. That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Tristan Bunner, a student of Tracy Robbins.
Chee Dee Moameka, student of Jane Johansson.
Mason Gifford, student of Jane Johansson. Good evening. We're here to talk to you about an enslaved individual named Prout. Prout was held by John Whitman Jr. of West Hartford.
We refer to slaves as enslaved individuals because slave is a dehumanizing term. It's important to humanize the enslaved individuals because they contributed to building the community as much as anyone else.
John Whitman Ju, John Whitman Jr., pre-slaveholder, had a lot of land and a beautiful house. When we look back, we might say that he did such a nice job and established a great home for his family. But did he do it all by himself? The enslaved individuals did a lot of work and did not get recognized for it. They worked for no pay, did not have free will, and they're trapped in one place. They didn't even have their own names, so all we know is Prout's first, first name, and we don't even know if that's his real name. Prout lived and worked at John Whitman Jr.'s house at 208 North Main Street in West Hartford. You can, you can still see the house at the corner of North Main Street at Asylum Avenue. He probably knew how to make butter cheese and worked with animals, worked in an apple orchard, and worked in this, in the cider and gross mills because John Whitman Jr. was a prominent landowner and farmer.
25% of men in Connecticut had to enlist in the Army to fight in the Revolutionary War. Slaveholders were allowed to send enslaved individuals to fight in their place. Prout died at Fort Ticonderoga on September 9, 1776. We know this because he was listed in the church records. John Whitman Jr. enlisted in the Army one year after Prout's death.
We don't know why Prout was at Fort Ticonderoga, but we do know three reasons that he might have been there. One, enslaved individuals often took the place of their slaveholder, so Prout might have been forced to go by John Whitman Jr. to go to Fort Ticonderoga. Two, Prout might have been chosen to go maybe because he thought he would be free after the war. Three, he thought he would be so close to Canada, he might have thought he could escape.
You know, there are 26 men on the war memorial plaque who died during the Revolutionary War. Of the 26 men, 11 men died in camp, and seven men died of prurient fever. Prout died in September 76 of Fort Ticonderoga, where three other West Hartford men died between April and October 1776. The three men were John Cowell, who, like Prout, died in Camp Cornelius Flowers, and John Steele Jr., who died in camp of prurient fever. Prout died and might have also had the fever. All of the 26 men who died in the Revolutionary War, only two died in battle.
We do not know if Prout ever fought in battle, for we do know that most of the men on the war memorial did not die on the battlefield. There are lots of different roles that soldiers take on during a war, all in support of the cause.
Just because back then we didn't treat enslaved individuals well enough to honor them for fighting for this country to be free, doesn't mean we can't be better people now. We think that we should add Prout's name to all the other people who gave their lives for this country.
By engraving his name on the war memorial, we can show that we don't support what happened to enslaved individuals in the past, and we can learn and grow from our past mistakes.
We hope you will consider our request and help us to remember and honor Prout and other enslaved individuals who died in the war for our freedom.
Thank you for listening to our request.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That was very, very, very informative. And I've been to Fort Ticonderoga, obviously not knowing the incredible history that West Hartford had there, and that there was a slave that was killed in Revolutionary War. So, we are really inspired by your words and I, and your stories, and thank you for doing all the hard work of research and for sharing it with us. I just wanted to know if there were any questions or comments, but this is a little unusual that we do this in a interactive for the, for our community comment, but this is a very unusual presentation. So, I'd like to take the opportunity, if anyone would like to say anything at the council. So, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just like to compliment you on your work, and also your ability to stand up in front of a roomful of people. I know that's a, that's a challenge most adults have, so to see young folks like yourselves do that and do that well, I think is great. So, thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else? Ms. Kerrigan?
I echo my fellow counselors' comments. Thank you so much for having the courage to come and stand before us. It fills my heart with hope for our future, knowing that you are the future. If we can learn by our mistakes, I love that line, we can certainly prevent or minimize the injustices that have been served by enslaved folks. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
And what I, what I so appreciate that you're doing is adding humanity to what was such an inhumane treatment and, and period in our country's history. I also want to give a very special thank you to Tracy Wilson, the town historian, and Liz Devine, who brought this project from Guilford, Connecticut, but it was based on a, something, the Stoperstein Project, that memorialized Holocaust survivors. And I was in Rome, actually, last year, and literally tripped over a little gold plaque of a person that had been murdered in the Holocaust, but they were right there. And I thought, it just, this whole wave of understanding what you were doing, and, and so much of my own history, and it was very, very powerful. So, these, the work that you're doing now is going to stay with us forever and be shared and shared and shared. So, I really appreciate, again, all you're doing and the leadership of, of all the leaders out there, the teachers, and I didn't get everybody's name, and I feel terrible about that, but the teacher from Renberg and all the teachers that are involved in the project and helping to guide the students. So, all right, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to commend all the students and the researchers. Tonight, I learned something that I had no idea even took place in our community. And as leaders today, I think it's incumbent upon ourselves to take your evidence and to do the next step, and that is, I think you've asked us to make certain that the name of Prout get engraved on the memorial. And I think, as counselors, I think that's our duty to make certain that happens, and, and to be involved in, to encourage other people in our community to come forward and to get a better understanding that the West Hartford of today is not the same as the West Hartford of 1776. And I think that's so important to, to realize and, and to learn from, because I think we're better from learning from our, from our past. It will shape our future, and tonight, you have given us the evidence necessary to make that next step, and I really appreciate all your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fay.
Thank you very much. I am a history buff. I love history. I love to read historical novels, biographies, autobiographies, and I think what you did is exceptional. And I've always said, I come from a family of teachers, and I love history, and if I want to refresh her, I always ask my sister to bring home a 5th grade history book on American history, because I believe that has a lot of coverage, and that's the best way for anybody who wants to learn about American history, to get a 5th grade book, seriously. So, I really appreciated what you had to say, and we will follow through and honor Prout. It was very, very informative, and, you know, something to really think about, and I think we all, we should all think about that.
Thank you. And I just did want to say that, you know, it's important for people's stories who have been silenced, for us to carry those stories forward, and how powerful that is. But I also, when I was looking at the Guilford Project, and they had done a, a book that they read together about complicity, and I think that's a really important point, that if, if people can't speak and you're complicit in that, that is, makes, that is all the more responsibility on those people that sit by and watch injustice. So, again, I want to thank you. I don't know if you have some closing remarks, Tracy, or, yeah? Okay. All right. But thank you again, students. One more round of applause for this.
Okay. I do want to introduce Michaela Grant, who's a student of Sarah Frazini Kendrick. You did it. Nice going. And just to mention that Sarah is a Conard graduate and a former student of mine, so that adds some meaning to this. And I just want to say, as the town historian, I recommend that Prout's name be put on the monument.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And we will, I don't think there's, I don't know, I don't think we have to take a formal vote. If anybody has issues, I guess they can talk to matter, but we felt that the town's historian's recommendation to us would be adequate to move forward with this. So, thank you so much again for all your hard work, and we will make this happen, so. All right? All right. Now, we, we move on to the business. We have a public hearing now, so we're going to move into that. You're free to stay, but you can go. If you're hungry. Thank you again. All right. We will call the 7:15 public hearing to order. This is an ordinance permitting cottage food operation in residence districts. We'll start with the roll call, Ms. Brinney. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Swanton is in his absence. Okay. Ms. Cantor? Here. Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Mr. Dodge?
Here.
Ms. Fay?
Here.
Ms. Kerrigan? Mr. Sweeney's absent. Mr. Matthews? Mr. Winograd? Mr. Williams?
Here.
Thank you to Mr. Swanton and Charles for filling in on, Mr. Williams for filling in for the two counselors that can't be present. We will start with the presentation. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn to Mr. McGovern in a moment to make the presentation, but wanted to speak to a procedural matter first. So, as a staff, we're recommending tonight that you open the public hearing, but that you continue it until your first meeting in June, which falls on June 11. And the reason is, you will find in your materials, that the Town Plan and Zone Commission initially supported the proposal, but we learned following that there was some miscommunication on a key component of the ordinance, as to when a special use permit would be required. So, TPZ would like to have another opportunity to review the ordinance in a little bit more detail. So, that's why we're recommending that you continue the public hearing until June. That will provide us with an opportunity to take the draft back to TPZ to review any additional concerns they may have. They may have suggested amendments, they may not. So, just want to have a chance to address that upfront. I'll now turn to Mr. McGovern for our presentation.
Good evening. Mark McGovern, Community Development Director. I'm here with our zoning enforcement officer, Brian Pedlec, and our economic development specialist, Kristen Korski, to discuss the ordinance that would allow cottage food operations in residence districts. For decades now, the town has allowed home occupation permits for a number of different professions in residential districts. Last year, the state of Connecticut established a new cottage food law in a program with the Department of Consumer Protection. And we were made aware of this by a local resident. Jennifer Nell was here today. I think she'll speak later this evening. She came to the office looking for a zoning permit, and we realized that our ordinances didn't allow for cottage food operations under our home occupation permit process. The reason being is we have a restriction currently related to the ability to have stock and trade at your home-based business. So, we, we met with Jennifer, got a good understanding of her intentions. We, we researched the, the new program with the DCP, talked with our health district and other departments. We thought this was a good economic development initiative, a good way in which we can spur entrepreneurship in town, hopeful that we can have some cottage food operators grow and ultimately work with Kristen to find a bigger storefront space or commercial space. Just to back up for a minute, cottage food are low-risk foods defined and identified by the state, which have a low likelihood of foodborne illnesses. So, includes things like desserts and pastries and candies, jellies and jams, things of that nature. So, we drafted the ordinance that you have before you. We reviewed it with CPPS, and they've sponsored it. And there are really just a couple of, of things I'll point out that we needed to do to revise this section of the zoning code. One was a definition of cottage food operation, which is on the first page. And then, the other revision is underlined at Section 177-49(c)(4). And what that does, for licensed, by the state, licensed cottage food operators, they are exempt from a previous subsection of this part of the code related to keeping stock and trade. So, on page 2, subsection 5, it says, "Keeping of stock and trade or sale, rental, or holding for sale, or delivery of any merchandise, goods, products, equipment, including but not limited to food, is not permitted." So, our new language exempts cottage food operators from that particular restriction. The issue that Matt introduced, related to the TPZ, has to do with what's called a special exception for any home occupation permittee. And if a permittee wants to have either a non-resident employee at the home, or host customers or clients at the home, they would have to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals to receive a special exception. So, as it's currently stated here, a cottage food operator would have the same controls and restrictions on their operation as any other home occupation permittee. With that, what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is ask Brian Pedlec, our zoning enforcement officer, to speak to you just a little bit about the home occupation permit process, his experience, the number we have, and so forth, just to have an understanding of, of what we're dealing with tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening, Brian Pedlec, zoning enforcement officer. As Mark indicated, there's, there's two types of home occupations, different types of permits that we, that we have in the town of West Hartford. One is a, is a standard administrative home occupation permit, and that's given to anybody that, that wishes to operate. You know, typically, it's an attorney's office, or an architecture business, or something along those lines, where they do not have client interaction at the home. They simply, you know, they have a desk, they have a computer, and they, and they work that way. And the process for issuing that permit is, it's a one-time permit. Come into the planning and zoning office, you fill out a piece of paper, you give us, you give us the fee, and, and we simply review that it meets with the other standards of Section 177-49, which is the, the standards for home occupations, as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, as long as it meets those standards, then, then we go ahead and issue the permit, and typically, nothing else happens from there. On rare occasions, if, if we do find that, that a, somebody that's received that type of permit is having client interaction at the house by way of complaints, or something along those lines, then, then, then we would issue a notice of violation, or in some other way, contact them if we don't feel a notice of violation is prudent, then we would contact them and, and simply ask that they come in and get a special exception. Which takes me to the, to the second type of home occupation permit that we issue, which is, is a special exception, and that's under circumstances where, where a business owner wishes to have client interaction at the house. And, and so, in that case, we would bring them before the Zoning Board of Appeals, and at that point, the CBA has an opportunity to, to grant conditions on the approval. Typically, it's something along the lines of, you know, all of your clients have to park in the driveway, that there's, that there's no overlap in, in clients coming to the house, just to try to minimize the impact on the neighborhood. And so, the same would apply in this case with a cottage food operator. So, those that wish to just simply operate their business and, and cook the food that they're going to cook, but then deliver it, either deliver it to their client's house, or, or bring it to a farmer's market, those folks would be eligible for just the simple administrative home occupation permit. Those that, that wish to have folks come to their house if they want to make a delivery or have meetings and so forth to discuss designs, you know, for, for whatever baked goods they're making, then that, that type of, that type of business owner would, would require a, a special exception. In terms of numbers, you know, we don't, we don't do too many of these home occupations on an annual basis. It's, you know, it's probably a handful, you know, and special exceptions about the same. And, and so, you know, it's not, it's, this is not something that we view as, as very taxing on staff time, or, or being some, or something that's going to have a huge impact on a neighborhood. And so, we're, we're supportive of it for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Pedlec.
Happy to take any questions.
Yeah. Is, so, we, we actually, is that the, conclude the presentation, or you want, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pedlec? Ms. Fay?
Thank you. Just in general, since most of these are food-type industries or businesses, I shouldn't say industries, is there any health department inspection of the kitchens or anything like that?
The health department does not have jurisdiction, evidently. And this was something that we asked early on in the process, Steve Uli- Steve Uliat, the director of that department, was made aware that this change in state statute had taken place. We let him know that we were moving forward with this ordinance, and he said that he had no concerns with it, and that the health district has no jurisdiction in this case, that it's purely dealt with through the Department of Consumer Protection.
If I could add, DCP's program has certain requirements that gave us pause, so, not pause, gave us comfort. There's food training that's required as part of the licensing with the state. So the administrative aspects of making sure that the food is being made in a safe manner is all under the auspices of the state of Connecticut, not the town.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Anybody else have questions? Oh, Mr. Winograd.
Just sort of a procedural question. I know we had received public comment on this, we had a rather lengthy letter. I don't see it on our board docs, I know that should have been made part of the record, I'm missing it there, but I don't have it in front of me.
I do.
Right. So I wonder if you could respond to some of the points that residents made.
Absolutely, I can speak to that. I plan to. Yes, there was an email that came in through the clerk's office, and I believe was distributed to all council members. I received a copy, identifying a number of concerns by one particular resident. And I can go through them. One was that it would be an administrative burden on the staff. We don't believe that's the case, we don't think we're going to have a huge volume, or that's going to be problematic. She also brought up concerns about commercial ovens in kitchens. So, I talked with our building officials, two things, there are commercial ovens, and there are commercial-like ovens. Commercial-like ovens look like something that might be in a restaurant on Farmington Avenue, but doesn't have the same gas output, it might have the same number of burners. So when any oven is installed, it's up to the installer to do so in accordance with the manufacturer's specifications. And some of the specifications will outline that it can't be up against cabinets, so forth. If any home is transitioning from either an electrical stove to gas, or upgrading the gas, that would require a building permit and would go through our normal inspections. There was a concern about residential zoning and having a commercial influence in residential zones. I respect that concern, but I don't think we have a challenge there. This is consistent with our home occupation permitting process that we've had for decades. And then, excuse me, there was general concern that it would take away from, or be a competitive disadvantage for commercial businesses that rent space and pay taxes on owned, in leased property. In this case, cottage food operators are quite small, and there's a revenue limitation on it through the state program, I think of $25,000. So we really don't see cottage food operators being so influential that it would hurt our business districts. I think we're known for food, quite frankly, and my perspective is, you know, competition's a good thing. And again, what we're hoping for is entrepreneurs will grow out of their kitchen and into spaces, you know, throughout town, and that's the way we see we can play.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. Any other questions? All right, with that, I think we'll go to the sign-up sheet, to see if anybody signed up. Okay, the first person that signed up is Chuck Corsi. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Chuck Corsi, 21 Walbridge Road, West Hartford. Mayor, I'm here in my capacity as a board member of the West Hartford Chamber of Commerce, and I also chair the chamber's Economic Development Commission. And also with me is Chris Conway, our executive director of the chamber. From time to time, the chamber has been approached by businesses that are looking for the chamber's endorsement, whether it's for a new development project, or their business. We have not had in the past a process which folks could come to us and ask for our public support. Chris, one of the great new things that Chris has begun in his short term here at the chamber is we now have an application process that someone can fill out if they want to request the support of the West Hartford Chamber. I had heard about the cottage industry application. I had the opportunity to meet Jennifer, who's here tonight, and thought that this might be a very good first implementation of that application process. So we asked Jennifer to fill out the application. Many of the questions that were in that application were some of the concerns that Mr. McGovern just brought up. We don't see these as the cottage industry is competing with our bake shops. We actually see this as almost a small business incubators. We want Jennifer and others like her to be so successful that she's going to move into, eventually hit her threshold, and move into one of our fine commercial centers, thereby adding to the vibrancy of the community. We don't see it as a problem with traffic in neighborhoods. I speak to you as the proud holder of a home office permit. I've had one at our house for 20 years, and no complaints for the neighbors. They might complain about other things, our dogs, but not that. So we think this is very beneficial for all of West Hartford. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to have Chris talk a little bit more about Jennifer's application, and it's not just Jennifer, obviously, it's for the whole town, and we think that this would be very beneficial for the whole town, and in keeping with the chamber's mission to promote the business environment here in West Hartford. So with that, if it's all right with you, I'll introduce Chris Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Corsi. And Chris was the next person to sign up, too, so, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Christopher Conway, 55 Malsine Drive, Southington, Connecticut. Chuck pretty much said everything I want to say, but I do have a letter of support that I would like to read and submit.
Just a clarification, we don't have to suspend the rules because you are the West Hartford Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to make a statement, I have a couple of questions, thank you.
I do have an office at 948 Farmington Avenue. I'm in the basement, come by and see me, I have coffee. And maybe I'll have cookies sometime soon. Please accept this letter of support from the West Hartford Chamber of Commerce for Jennifer Nell's proposal to amend the current West Hartford zoning ordinance, Section 177-49, to support the new cottage food law made defective by the state of Connecticut in October of 2018. Such an amendment would allow Ms. Nell and others to produce low-risk baked food goods in their home for resale, as allowed by state law. We feel that our support of this proposed change is consistent with the chamber's mission to encourage development of business in our community. Enterprises such as Ms. Nell's provide taxable income with minimal impact on town resources. They also have the potential to become economic drivers by growing and expanding to commercially-zoned areas of town. Continued growth could also provide jobs and other opportunities for West Hartford residents. Based on the information provided, the West Hartford Chamber of Commerce lends its support to this proposed zoning ordinance change.
Thank you, Mr. Conway, I appreciate it. And it's the first time, it's very, you know, it's efficient, great idea. All right, are there any question, well, we don't have questions for you, sorry. Thank you very much. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this public hearing? Please just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Nell, I live at 25 Seneca Road. I'm the one that requested to talk about all this, and I really appreciate you guys listening to all this. I was really excited when I moved here in August, this past August, because I love to bake. It has been a huge passion of mine for quite a while. And I moved down here from Vermont, where I had my business up there, and it was pretty successful, and I really loved doing it. So when I found out that I was going to be moving down here, I was following the progression of the state law, with it being passed. And when it was finally passed in October, I was super excited, and I was a little disappointed when I found out that the town of West Hartford didn't allow it. So that's when I started looking into all this. And I did reach out to all of my neighbors, or eight across, and four on either side, to hear any sort of potential concerns. One was really excited about the potential smells in the neighborhood. And the only other potential concern I heard was about traffic and random people on the street, and I assured them that I would be delivering only, and there wouldn't be any issues with that. But everyone else seemed really supportive, and excited about the idea of having a baker in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Nell, and we thank you for your patience, because this has been a long process, so I appreciate it very much. And so, if, we don't, we can't interact with, we just received your comments, so I appreciate, thank you so much. All right. Is there any further questions for the River Town staff, or anybody? No? So we will follow the town manager's instructions, and we will, well, first, we're going to read into the record, I do have one question. We do have a record, letter dated May 19, 2019, from TPZ recommending approval. So we'll just read it into the record, there's nothing more that we can do. Letter dated May 1, 2019, from CROG, finding no apparent conflict. And with that, we will continue the public hearing to allow TPZ to deliberate further to June 11 at 7:15. Thank you so much, I'll close. All right?
All right, so, we think we need, we're going to table the record, so we don't, we don't run on the table. So if you want to, it's up to you.
Thank you. See you next month.
Thanks, appreciate you, thank you very much.
Sorry, start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Priney?
Mr. Barnes is absent, Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Mr. Dodge?
Here.
Ms. Fay?
Here.
Ms. Kerrigan? Mr. Sweeney's absent, Mr. Winograd?
Present.
And Mr. Williams?
Here.
Okay, we'll start with a motion to suspend the rules to present for proclamation. Second? Motion's been made as seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. I'm not sure the recipients are here, but we have, there's a lot of, this is, May is like Awareness Month. And so, we have, I think there is somebody here for National Prevention Week? Yes? Okay. Why don't we go up, we'll start with that one. Yes, so I will, right, so I will ask them to come up as they, okay? So we'll start with the National Prevention Week. So we have, we have preventers here.
Members of the Substance Abuse Prevention Commission.
So, this proclamation is being presented to members of the Substance Abuse Commission. So we will start with this. So whereas the town of West Hartford will celebrate National Prevention Week with activities during the week of May 12 through May 18, and whereas the efforts are designed to bring the community together to prevent substance use and promote mental health and wellness, and this year's theme, Inspiring Action, Changing Lives. And whereas specific topics will be addressed each day of the week, including ways to prevent prescription and opioid drug misuse, prevent underage drinking and alcohol misuse, prevent illicit drug use and youth marijuana use, prevent youth tobacco use, and prevent suicide. And whereas the National Prevention Week is held each year during the third week of May, near the start of summer, which is an important time to refocus on prevention, and also a time when adolescent and college students most often use substances for the first time. And whereas we recognize these key periods of social transitions are a risk factor for youth substance use, but also present an opportunity to develop and strengthen the community, school, and family bonds that protect young people from substance use and strengthen community health and overall. And whereas the town of West Hartford, through the Division of Social Services, the West Hartford Police Department, West Hartford Bloomfield Health District, the West Hartford Board of Education, the Bridge Family Center, as the town's Youth Service Board Bureau, sorry, the Substance Abuse Prevention Commission, the West Hartford Prevention Partnership, along with individuals and the general public, will continue to collaborate on year-round prevention efforts. Now therefore be proclaimed that on behalf of the town council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby recognize the week of May 12 through May 18 as West Hartford Prevention Week, and support efforts to increase public awareness about the importance of substance use prevention and positive mental health. And thank you all for the really important work you do every day, and the impact you make on all of our residents in West Hartford, appreciate it very much, so. And you're free to, I don't know if anyone wants to speak? No, you're good? Okay. Thank you again for coming out, and you're welcome to say a few words if you'd like to, anybody?
I just wanted to remark on who is here to receive this proclamation. We have members of the Substance Abuse Prevention Commission, Jay Shenshul, and Jonathan Merritt, Nordia Napier, and we also have members of West Hartford Social Services here, members of the Institute for Community Research, that are all volunteering on the West Hartford Partnership. And we also have the Bridge Family Center, as the town's Youth Services Bureau represented on that board. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you again. Well, you can take the proclamation. Oh, you did, okay. Sorry, there's so many here. Okay, mental health awareness, which is very attached to this, actually, so, and these are social services and, yeah. Astrid Calderon, thank you so much. Yes. Astrid and Karen work so hard every day for our community. Whereas Mental Health Awareness Month started in the United States in 1949 by the Mental Health America Organization. Whereas mental health is part of overall health, and helps to sustain an individual's thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change or face adversity. And whereas one in four adults experiences mental health problems in any given year, and such problems can contribute to onset of mental illness. And whereas early identification and treatment can make a profound difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for far too long have surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. And whereas this year's theme, Four Mind, Four Body, explores topics of spirituality, animal companionship, including pets and support animals, humor, work-life balance, and recreation and social connectedness as ways to boost mental health and general wellness. Now therefore be proclaimed that on behalf of the town council and residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby recognize the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month, and support efforts to raise mental health awareness and continue helping individuals live longer, healthier lives. And again, thank you so much for the work you do.
And I just want to introduce Aunt Astrid Calderon, the manager of social services, and Karen Paquette, who's a social worker. I also want to acknowledge and thank Brittany Stevenson in the town manager's office for facilitating this, she put a lot of work into this as well, thank you.
Yes, she did. Thank you so much, and here you go. Thank you so much, Karen. All right. Okay, is there somebody here for the childhood apoplexias? Yes. Go get a Zyrtec. Hello, how are you? Hi. Okay, so I'm going to have you speak after, if that's okay. So we're going to make you all, give you a little education. Whereas May 14, 2019, marks the 5th Annual Childhood Aproxies of Speech Day, during which awareness will be raised throughout Connecticut about childhood apoplexias of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder in children. And whereas childhood apoplexias of speech is a disorder in children. And whereas childhood apoplexy of speech causes, it's also called CAS, causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits in children. And whereas the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, though those with apoplexia endure an incredible and lengthy struggle. And whereas without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apoplexia are placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. And whereas most children with apoplexia of speech will learn to communicate with their very own voices only if they receive early intervention, appropriate intensive and frequent speech therapy. And whereas it is imperative that there be greater public awareness about childhood apoplexy of speech in Connecticut among community members, physicians, education professionals, policymakers, and elected officials. Now therefore be proclaimed that on behalf of the town council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby recognize May 14th, 2019, as Aproxia Awareness Day in West Hartford, and encourage residents to work within the community to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apoplexy of speech. And would you, I please like to say a few words about you and your son.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Sakwitz, and I'm a speech and language pathologist. And I thank you all so much for having us here tonight and recognizing May 14th as Aproxia Awareness Day. It's a motor speech disorder which affects children's abilities to move their mouths, to produce clear and understandable speech, requires intensive speech therapy. And I was here tonight with my friend, Matias, and he's accepting the proclamation on our behalf. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thanks. No, thank you. Thank you. Keep up the good work. All right. And Emergency Medical Services. Is there, okay, come on down. It's perfectly fine. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service and members of Emergency Medical Service Teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative maintenance, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services System consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas members of Emergency Medical Service Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skill. And whereas May 19th to May 25th, 2019, is the 45th, 45th Annual National EMS Week. And this year, this, the inaugural Connecticut Emergency Medical Services for Children Day will be celebrated on May 22nd, 2019, as a day to recognize the care that EMS and emergency departments provide to the state's children. Now therefore be proclaimed that on behalf of the town council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers and proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2019, as EMS Week in West Hartford. But this is a special emphasis in childcare, right? And so, yes, doctor, I would.
I'm Marion Kelly. I am a pediatric emergency physician at Connecticut Children's. And part of the work that we do with Emergency Medical Services for Children is to ensure that all children, whether they live in Connecticut, visit, or attend school here, get appropriate emergency care. And we're thrilled that Mayor Cantor and the rest of the town council has agreed to support us this year, just in the care of our children in West Hartford and in the whole state. Thank you very much.
And thank you for the work you do for our children. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
If you'd like to, if you'd like to take the proclamation.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, we're, don't let proclamation. Right now I've lost my agenda. Okay. Uh, number two, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the town council meeting's 4/23/2019.
I second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, I actually wanted to do a greeting, and I apologize that I'm going back up to the top of the agenda for a minute. But I did want to wish our Muslim friends and neighbors Ramadan Kareem. It means have a generous Ramadan. Remind people of worshiping more and do more with charity. And Ramadan is celebrated Sunday, May 5th through June 4th. And our heartfelt sorrow with the arson and destruction of the Dianette Mosque at 531 Middletown Avenue in New Haven. We're thinking about you this day. I apologize for not doing that at the start of the meeting. Um, so now that has been made and seconded and approved, public forum, there's nobody signed up. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to something on the agenda that is not subject to a public hearing? Okay. With that, we will go to number four, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we place item 6C on consent.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, 5A, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we table to June 11th of the town council meeting and ordinance permitting cottage food operations in resident districts.
Second.
And that is just a motion to table. We don't vote on that. So that's tabled until, for the record, June 11th, 7:15. Item 6A, Ms. Kerrigan. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Item 6A, ordinance, uh, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we set for public hearing on June 25th, 2019, at 7:15 in the Legislative Chamber and refer to TPZ and CROG, an ordinance on behalf of Castro Park LLC requesting amendments to Section 177-37.4, food truck parks. The applicant has also requested a waiver of the required fees pursuant to Section 177-50M.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, 6B, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of a resolution setting town council meeting dates for July 16, 2019, and August 13, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and we just didn't take this on suspense because I just want to make sure that people are aware that we do meet just once in July, once in August, and the meetings are at 6:30. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, 6D, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we adopt a resolution to carry forward inappropriate assistance to firefighters program grant funds awarded the town of West Hartford by the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Hart, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor. And I will invite Fire Chief Greg Priest to come forward. So we are seeking council authorization here to transfer an unexpended balance in one FEMA grant to another. And I'll ask Chief to elaborate on the reasons why. So Chief, just from the podium.
Evening, Council. Good to see everybody tonight. Thank you for having me. Just speaking on behalf of the manager and myself. As you'll see from your materials tonight, Town Manager Hart and I put together a cover memo for you, which is, is we accepted a grant from FEMA that was from the 2017, 2018 year. We were subsequently preparing to receive this vehicle. However, due to some price increases, the fact that we had some change in fire department leadership, we want to make sure we have the right appropriate vehicles. And we also want to make sure that that vehicle itself is able to be inspected in accordance with state regulations. It was coming without a stretcher. This will allow us to put a stretcher in the back of it, which will allow us to use the vehicle for a variety of different uses in accordance with the wishes of the council and make sure that it is also inspected. So this is no cost to the town. This is from grant funds that were unexpended through an AirePAC grant that we received as well. So I'd be glad to take any questions and would appreciate your support of the motion.
Thank you, Chief Priest, and also congratulate us on EMS Week. I would have recognized you. Any questions for the chief? Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir.
So I just want to understand this, and this could be direct to whoever. So the FEMA grant comes in, I'm just looking at the resolution. It comes in at $58,786, and then we just appropriate that same sum on the other side in the next year's budget?
So let me start, and Chief, you can add. The, the grant for the AirePACs was in a larger sum. I can't recall off the top of my head, but that's the balance that's available to transfer to the EMS vehicle.
Okay.
To purchase the power stretcher and related equipment.
And then if, if we didn't expend the funds, we would, what, do we have to give it back on this specific?
Correct. So what we could do is, is we could attempt to ask the federal government to take and reallocate those funds to do something different with the AirePACs. However, based upon the financial picture of the town, what our needs are right at the moment, it was more appropriate for us to ask FEMA to try and fund the other grant that they had given us in totality so that we can reduce the cost impact to the town.
All right. Okay. So this is just some other follow-up. So the, the vehicle that we are purchasing is basically an ambulance. It's got the ambulance structure on it, but it's not an ambulance in terms of operation, I guess. That's what's envisioned? Because, so right now, we don't provide transport, right?
That's correct, sir.
Am I correct that if the town were to move to a transport model, it would require council approval? Is that right?
We would seek council approval, yes.
And then?
Change the deployment model.
So just, so I understand also, um, there's an open question, correct, as to whether or not, once we obtain the ambulance and this stretcher, whether or not we could provide transport if needed? In other words, whether or not we could put the ambulance, once equipped with a stretcher, into the field?
Yeah, let me start, Chief, and you can add on. So right now, the town has the state certificate to provide advanced life support service. It's an open question as to whether or not that certificate would allow us to provide ALS transport. Seems somewhat unclear. The, the certificate that AMR, the private provider currently has, allows them to provide transport for BLS and ALS. So again, it's, it's questionable as to whether or not we would need another certificate to provide ALS transport. We do hold the certificate right now to provide the ALS service. Chief, I don't know if you want to add any detail to that.
No, I, I think that that's a, that's an accurate representation, but just, Mr. Williams. So I think we all recognize that we have what I would consider to be an uncertain future in some of our EMS areas, that we need to have some policy decisions. What my concern with this particular vehicle was, is that we were going to bring it in, and that it wasn't going to meet the grant specifications so that we could receive it, and that it wouldn't be able to be certified by OEMS in the use that we may or may not want to use it for in the future. The other thing is, is, and I'm very transparent about this, is if we brought it in and decided that this wasn't the vehicle for us, without the stretcher in the back, it had no resale value, it was basically going to be something with four wheels on the back of it, and, and I was concerned. So it was my opinion and my request to the town manager that we take and outfit this vehicle so that it is capable of all of the things that it could possibly be used for, and then we can allow the, our decision-making, our policy process to go forward, and as we move through the regulations to make sure that we can use it. I, I didn't want to end up with a vehicle that says ambulance on the side without a stretcher in the back of it, and then not be able to do anything with it.
Okay. And so do we, can we use it for anything that you envision before a policy decision were to be made on transport?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So we can bring this in even without the stretcher in the back of it right at the moment. We can use it as an intercept vehicle. It has to be inspected, but I want to make sure that we have all the equipment necessary so that we can get it inspected either way, either as an ALS intercept vehicle or as a transport ambulance. But I do reserve the fact that we have policy decisions that need to be made first. We have regulations. We have relationships that need to be maintained and cultured before we start doing anything with it. And we'll be in front of the policymakers before we make any changes.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anything else? Mr. Davidoff?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. As Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I'd like to commend you, Chief, for being proactive with regard to the remaining funds from the breathing safety equipment, and looking forward with respect to any obstacles we may encounter with the ability to license this particular vehicle that we're going to be receiving later this month. As has been stated on numerous occasions, the decision as to whether or not we're going to provide transport is one that's going to be made in the future, as we've had a discussion around the council table and committee to determine whether or not that, that meets the needs. And I think one of the key things that you highlighted this evening was that we're not looking to harm any of the relationships we have with our current provider being AMR, and not going to take any steps that would unnecessarily put the town in a poor position to provide EMS service to our residents. So for all those reasons this evening, and the additional reason that the funding will not cost the taxpayers of West Hartford any additional funds to outfit this vehicle with a stretcher, I will be supporting this resolution. But I think it's very important to note that in short order, in the time that you've served as our Fire Chief, you've made great strides understanding the issues that have been presented to us and are always looking out for our best interests and the interests of our taxpayers. So I commend you, sir, this evening.
Thank you, sir. I have a great team and I have great support.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. And any other questions for the chief? Mr. Williams? Shut down.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We did that in touch already?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Doesn't want me to speak. So just, just to sort of take a step back and get to my thoughts on this in response to Leon is, as everyone knows, I have concerns about the paramedic program, and it seems like the movement to transport is sort of fait accompli. I mean, we're purchasing ambulances and now, now beds, so I'm not going to support this. And I just want to be clear as to why I'm concerned about this direction, and that's no secret to anyone here. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Williams. All right. If there's no further questions, thank you, Mr. Mathieu, Chief. Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Didn't we say any too?
Yes.
Go back to 6E. I apologize, my ears are a little fogged, and I'm not sure I heard it. You had on the, on the food truck ordinance?
Yes.
You have a substitute, and I wanted to make sure that when you made the motion, you moved the substitute.
Which was, oh, I don't know if it was moved, but it was.
When I, when I spoke the movement.
Okay, so we will do that. So, um, go ahead, make the motion to move the.
Uh, I move that we set substitute for public hearing on June 25th, 2019, at 7:15 in the Legislative Chamber, and refer to TPZ and CROG, and ordinance on behalf of Castro Park LLC requesting amendments to Section 177-34.4, food truck parks. The applicant has also requested a waiver of the required fees pursuant to Section 177-50M.
Second.
Okay, the substitute ordinance has been made, and motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Uh, now we are down to 6E.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we set for public hearing on May 28th, 2019, at 7:10 in the Legislative Chamber, a resolution authorized in submission of the Neighborhood Assistant Grant Application.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, number seven, this, oh, sorry. Sorry, yes, sorry. Well, no, you could do it anytime, but anyway.
Well, I figured this is a good time, right?
Yeah, it is.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules so that I could bring back forward a resolution for no tolls. Um, can I talk about it now, or should I?
You need to, a second. And you need two-thirds of the, to take, to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules for a resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Now you can.
Okay, thank you very much. Protocol. Um, I don't think there's a day that goes by that any of us aren't aware of what's happening with tolls. And the opposition is building and building and building. Uh, there's actually a state, Save the State Rally next Saturday, where citizens and other leaders are coming forward in opposition to implementing tolls in the state of Connecticut. Um, it's a very serious issue. It's a financial issue. It's a traffic issue. Uh, I will read the resolution or parts, but I'll summarize it in a minute. But, um, you know, from a financial standpoint, I don't know how many people know here, but the gasoline tax annually brings in $300 million. And that should have been earmarked for the Special Transportation Fund, which we all know has no money. It's been depleted. So it, the money that has been earmarked from the gasoline tax has gone into the Special Transportation Fund and then into the General Fund, and that is why we have no money for building our infrastructure, roads, highways, bridges, et cetera. So I don't think it's an issue, and so many don't as well, of raising additional funds through tolling to support rebuilding our infrastructure. It's really making sure that the money that's earmarked goes where it's supposed to be. So if you took that $300 million, plus, I don't even have a figure just yet. So, if you took that 300 million, plus, I don't even have a figure just yet, on the sales tax for automobiles, which is probably another couple of hundred million, you spread that over five years, we'd have $5 billion to spend on infrastructure. So, how can we trust, since it's been squandered in the past, that tolls are going to go into our infrastructure? It's another tax on the middle class. Uh, it's, it's another expense that we can't afford here in Connecticut, and we have not addressed any of our structural issues of getting our finances in order, getting our budget in order, and making Connecticut a friendly place to do business, so that both individuals and businesses don't continue to flee and increase our outmigration numbers. So, it's a very, very serious issue. We're trying to be responsive to our constituents. For the record, as of now, and it's growing every day, 16 towns have adopted similar resolutions. I think West Hartford should be a leader on this, and be responsive to citizens, and try to address their financial needs for once, without levying an additional tax on them. Um, the resolution, I'm not going to read it, you all have copies, or you will have copies, but, um, it's a typical resolution where it says, "The town of West Hartford hereby resolves to adopt a resolution in opposition to the current proposal for the implementation of tolls on Connecticut's highways as follows." Um, I'm going to tell you what the, what the impacts are, rather than read this verbatim. Maybe Mr. Williams wants to read it verbatim. But, um, weeks anticipate a dramatic increase of heavy-duty commercial vehicles, tractor-trailers, trucks, and automobiles encroaching on our community and negatively impacting the town's character and atmosphere. We see a dramatic increase of heavy-duty commercial vehicles, tractor-trailer trucks, and automobiles subjecting our streets, which are already in poor condition in my, that we hear a lot about our roads, to increased damage, maintenance, and repair costs, which will be an increased tax burden on our residents for West Hartford. Um, I think these roads will be crowded, will probably result in increase in traffic accidents and disruption of pedestrian and bike enjoyment in and around the roads affected, and congestion from increased vehicles and accidents delaying response times for emergency personnel, causing significant safety concerns and compromising the standard of safety care, and number five, discouraging shopping and enjoyment in retail areas, putting businesses at a competitive disadvantage by increasing costs and inconvenience to the residents. There is, this is not the latest, I would, if we go further with this, make a motion to substitute this one, but there's a point number six, which is, just highlights the cost burden that we're putting on residents, and the sponsors would have Mr. Williams, Mr. Barnes, and myself. So, and my comments there, I'm sure we'll engage in a very lively discussion. That's that for now.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Anybody else? Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, just a couple of things. I'd like to thank Chris Barnes and Mary, who put together the resolution. Chris isn't here tonight. He is here in spirit, perhaps he's watching. I'd like to thank Mary for work on pushing forward on this. Whatever you think on the merits, she cares about it, and that's to be admired. I also like to thank my Democratic colleagues for allowing us to raise this and discuss it. It's very appreciated. And, and so, you know, this, this issue with tolls, for me, is not unlike some of the issues we talk about on the town level. Worried about the state, we obviously have a slow economy in this state, slower than, than most other states. Corporations are leaving, people are leaving. We all know people who live six months and a day in another state just to avoid paying Connecticut taxes. And the, that's a response to what we see as a constant fiscal trend in the state, where the tax burden always increases, and it impacts adversely our business community and our residents. So, I think that West Hartford is, is a very powerful town politically. There's a lot of influence that West Hartford has in the state legislature, and for good reason. We're a high-quality town. But I think a resolution from us saying that we do not support towns would go a long way during the legislative process and the deliberations, because tolls are certainly up in the air. So, I stand with Ms. Fay and fully support the resolution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. Williams. Mr. Dodge?
Just, Madam Mayor, for a moment, and this is sort of a point of order, um, but just noting that this is an item that was brought up under suspense, so it's not something that's on our agenda, I thought that it might be appropriate for Ms. Fay to read the entire resolution. Again, just because it's not something that's on the agenda, and I know it sounded like you had a, a point six that you wanted to add there, and so, I think if you were to read it, it might, it might be, you might be able to do it without amending it.
Okay. Good suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fay, go ahead.
All right. Resolution. The town of West Hartford hereby resolves to adopt a resolution in opposition to the current proposal for the implementation of tolls on Connecticut's highways as follows. Whereas, the town of West Hartford, an inner-ring suburb neighboring the state capital, Hartford, believes that the implementation of tolls on Connecticut highways would result in increased traffic on secondary roads in the town of West Hartford, with motorists attempting to bypass the tolls, particularly when commuting to and from Hartford and the surrounding area. And whereas, the West Hartford Town Council further believes the increased traffic on secondary roads would affect the quality of life of West Hartford residents in numerous ways, including, point number one, a dramatic increase of heavy-duty commercial vehicles, tractor-trailer trucks, and automobiles presence encroaching on our scenic New England community, negatively impacting the town's character and atmosphere. Point number two, a dramatic increase of heavy-duty commercial vehicles, tractor-trailer trucks, and automobiles subjecting streets to increased damage, maintenance, and repair costs resulting in an increased tax burden. Number three, crowding of secondary roads, an increase in traffic accidents, and disruption of pedestrian and bike enjoyment in and around the roads affected. Point number four, traffic congestion from increased vehicles and accidents delaying response times for emergency personnel, causing significant safety concerns and compromising the standard of safety care. And point number five, discouraging shopping and enjoyment in retail areas, putting businesses at a competitive disadvantage by increasing costs and inconvenience to the residents. Point number six would be, and increasing costs on the middle class, and increasing their tax burden. So, now therefore be it resolved that the West Hartford Town Council does hereby declare its opposition to the implementation of tolls on state highways within the town of West Hartford jurisdiction and area, and be it further resolved that the West Hartford Town Council does hereby submit this resolution to the Governor of Connecticut and the Connecticut State Legislature. And then we have the sponsors, Christopher Barnes, Christopher Williams, and Mary Fay.
Thank you, Ms. Fay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dodge, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I just wanted to clarify that, because I think, again, this isn't something that was made available to the public prior to the meeting, and so I think it was important to make sure that, for the benefit of folks watching on TV and in the audience, that we're all clear on what we're discussing. So, so first of all, I do want to begin by thanking Ms. Fay and Mr. Williams for their thoughtful remarks, and obviously, there's a lot of discussion happening in Connecticut right now about the state's transportation needs. But one thing for which there seems to be universal bipartisan agreement is that the current condition of our transportation infrastructure is completely unacceptable. In that regard, I'm concerned that the resolution ignores the very serious, very real transportation problems that are currently facing Connecticut, problems that affect West Hartford residents every day. So, here are some facts. Nearly 50% of state-maintained roadways are currently, are in less than good condition. And right here in Greater Hartford, there are literally chunks falling, falling off of the I-84 Viaduct, a road that many residents use to commute to and from work. Connecticut has hundreds of bridges and at least one tunnel that have been raided in poor condition, nearly a third of which were built prior to 1950. Seventy-six of the bridges on the New Haven Rail, Rail Line, which is the busiest train corridor in the country, were built prior to World War II. And just this week, U.S. News &amp; World Report released an analysis that ranked Connecticut 46th in terms of quality of its infrastructure. Unfortunately, the issue of how to pay for transportation, for transportation projects is complex, is a complex question for which there are no easy answers. And I couldn't agree with Ms. Fay more that I, that it is absolutely a problem that we have in the past diverted revenues that were supposed to be dedicated towards transportation infrastructure towards other uses. Those monies should be protected for use in transportation. And the fact remains, Connecticut has one of the highest per capita debt ratios in the country, and so our capacity to issue new debt is limited. And we already have one of the highest gas taxes in the country, a regressive tax that is borne almost exclusively by Connecticut businesses and residents. Despite Connecticut being the gateway to New England, out-of-state passenger vehicles and commercial trucks easily drive clear across the state without contributing a penny to the maintenance and upkeep of our state roads and highways. So, given these complexities, Madam Mayor, I do not believe that West Hartford residents are well-served by the council wading into a politically-charged debate over how the state should pay for transportation projects, except to say that any solution must minimize the financial impact on Connecticut residents. This is a question that is best left for the governor and the legislature. We should be responsive to the problems that are facing West Hartford residents today, and it's clear that well-maintained, quality infrastructure is critical to public safety and economic development. And so, Madam Mayor, I propose that we amend the resolution to instead urge state officials to strengthen our investment in transportation. I've taken the liberty of drafting amendment, and I've printed copies that I will distribute now for everyone at the table, and there's also extra copies available for the members of the public that are here. And Madam Mayor, while, while that's being passed around, I'll just read it out loud for, for everyone. And just to be clear, this is, I guess, what, what you would call a strike-all amendment, and so in essence, this amendment would become the resolution, and is entitled, "A Resolution Encouraging State Investment in Transportation Infrastructure." It reads as follows. Whereas, the Special Transportation Fund supports the operations of the Department of Transportation and the Department of Motor Vehicles, and is the major source of investment in the state's transportation infrastructure, whereas, the Special Transportation Fund is currently projected to have significant operating deficits and is in danger of becoming insolvent, whereas, the transportation infrastructure is a key to economic growth and development, whereas, transportation infrastructure is essential to supporting a high quality of life and vibrant, healthy communities, and whereas, excessive traffic congestion leads to delayed response times for emergency personnel, and poorly maintained transportation systems create dangerous conditions and public safety hazards. Now be it therefore resolved by the Town Council of West Hartford that the Governor and the General Assembly are hereby urged to, one, work towards strengthening the Special Transportation Fund, and, two, develop a plan to ensure, develop a plan to ensure adequate investment in our transportation infrastructure while achieving fiscal sustainability and minimizing the financial burden on state residents. And that is the end of the amendment. And so with that, Madam Mayor, I would have moved, I would, I would move to amend the resolution accordingly.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. And is there any, just...
I just want to, I just want to make sure I understand. First of all, I've never seen a practice where someone proposes a resolution and someone substitutes it, so is that even okay? It seems...
Procedurally, yes. It's, it's a motion to amend. Um, it's a, as, as Mr. Dodge indicated, it's called a strike-all amendment, but procedurally, yes, a motion to amend is in order. So, the, the...
But this isn't an amendment, this is a replacement.
Correct. It's, it's, it's an amendment of all of the substance, yes.
I, I, I'm, I don't like this at all. I don't think it's fair.
I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying, process-wise, it's appropriate. You can debate the merits, I'm just...
Now, actually, you're free to, you talk. This is a position of, of the, our, the council, Mr. Dodge, this is seconded, it's on the table for discussion, so...
Okay, so, this completely leaves, leaves out tolls. There's no, this was specific, tailored to, yes, clean up the infrastructure, there's no disagreement around this table, I would venture to say, but we don't want tolls, and our residents don't want tolls. Ninety percent of our residents don't want tolls. So, specifying no tolls is critical to what I'm proposing. So, this amendment doesn't satisfy that one bit. It just says, let's pass the football down the field and have the legislature do as they wish. That is not what this was proposing. So, I appreciate the effort, Mr. Dodge, I certainly do, and I do agree, to some extent, let the legislature do their jobs, but they haven't, they haven't. Why should we trust them to do that now? I, I simply don't, I don't, we've been down this road so many times. If they stuck with gasoline tax and sales tax, we'd have more than enough to fund our infrastructure. So, I, I just don't, I think laying on another tax, I mean, the shoes are dropping in terms of businesses leaving. It's, it's a very, very serious matter. We're in net redemption. If it was, if we were a financial product, we'd have assets running out the door with people. I think this is a very big tipping point. I, I can't stress enough, and I know you know, Mr. Dodge, the energy around people resisting and campaigning against tolls. Having the no tolls is critical to what we're proposing. Um, I, I respect the effort, I really and truly do, but I, I feel extremely, I think you can tell passionately, strongly, and, and conviction behind not having tolls here, not another tax. There's enough taxes coming in the General Assembly that, there's another, you know, half a percent of payroll tax that is going to spare nobody. And you know the cafeteria of menu of taxes that are being proposed. So, this is just another one, and this one is going to really hurt the middle class. You called it regressive, it is regressive. So, um, I, I admire that you did take the lead to amend it. It's a substitution, and it completely obliterates the no tolls initiative of what we're trying to pass.
Thank you, Ms. Fay, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to take a different tact than Mary. I don't appreciate this amendment. Mary circulated her amendment, her proposed resolution last week, asked for feedback. We all know that, because Pat let us know about the FOIA concerns with respect to the email, and she did that about an issue she's concerned about, and I don't believe she received any responses, but tonight, um, on television, um, during the meeting, we received the response. So, I don't, I don't think that was, that was very considerate, given that Mary reached out and genuinely wanted to know people's positions. Uh, I have facts as well. I mean, we all know if tolls are implemented, where it's going to go. It's going to go, constant increases over the course of time, and you just need to look at the income tax to know that. When the income tax was implemented in 1991, it was a flat rate of 4.5%. Today, what do we have? We have seven brackets. Only one of the seven, only one of the seven is lower than 4.5%. It's easy to see that tolls will follow the same path moving forward and exacerbate what is already is an existing problem. Plus, the governor has zero credibility on tolls. He campaigned specifically on only tolling trucks, and within weeks of being inaugurated, turned around on that issue, which is why he's one of the nation's most unpopular governors already. And this gets back to a question that I'm often asked by my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, which is, what would you cut? You know, because there, we all recognize that there's only so much of a tax burden that a resident can bear. It's just a fact, we all know it, we have different opinions as to where that is, but we're constantly asked on this side, what we cut, and I've made some recommendations this year, and took some heat for it. And I guess I would turn the question around to my colleagues who are on the majority party. How much is enough? What's the highest mill rate? What's the highest tax burden a resident can bear when you combine a state income tax, a mill rate of 42, and tolls? I mean, when, when is it too much? Where's that number? Because that's where this is going, and that's why people are so concerned about tolls. And this resolution proposed by Councilman Dodge could have some, my support, if it had a number three, which said, basically said, "Without tolls," or "Without raising revenue." The fact of the matter is, hard decisions have to be made by the majority party. And, and one of the things that's always talked about is, well, other states have tolls, but other states also have very good policies that make business more friendly. Look at Wisconsin. Look at the decisions they made a few years ago, and now they're in an economic boom. They now have a liberal governor, a liberal governor, who's made very liberal policy, except for one, which is to turn back the right-to-work policies that have made the state in economic boom. Why don't we look at other states like Wisconsin at the state level and think about what we could do like them, rather than just point to tolls? I, um, I came across this quote from State Senator Van Far, who is from Weathersfield as well as Farmington, and he said, quote, "We know in Connecticut that having a local mill rate above 40 is like the canary in the coal mine. It's a sign of instability, and too many towns are trending in the wrong direction." It's a sign of instability, and too many towns are trending in the wrong direction." Now, our mill rate is over 40, and then, if we have tolls, the tax burden on our residents will be increased, which will, of course, exacerbate whatever canary in the coal mine there is that Senator Von Farah, who's a member of the majority party in the state legislature, is referring to. It's unsustainable, and I really do plead with my council colleagues on the other side of the aisle, because you are, you're very influential, and if West Hartford stood up against tolls, I think it would make a big difference on this issue, and I respect that we have difference of opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Dodge?
Just a point on procedure, Madam Mayor. Again, this is an item that's been brought up on suspense, and so, no member of the public saw this resolution that was proposed by Ms. Fay prior to the debate tonight. And she did circulate around to members of the council, and one frustration that I have had since I got in the council is the continued effort that we see by some members of this council to have substantive debates via email, and to debate issues of substance through an email chain. It's not proper, it's not appropriate under the Freedom of Information Act. And so, tonight, there was a resolution that no member of the public saw, brought forward by Ms. Fay, it was shared with members of the council. That was, again, the reason I asked her to read it out loud, because I don't know that members of the public would have known exactly what it was that we were voting on if it wasn't read. And I then made my motion in a transparent way, and now we're having that debate, not over email, as it seems some wanted to have it.
It wasn't a debate over email.
But we're having the debate as is proper, at the council table, in public. And so, I appreciate all the comments that Ms. Fay and Mr. Williams have made, many of which I agree with, and I'm happy that we're having this debate in public. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. And anybody else? Mr. Winograd?
So, we start this with what I see as a borderline political move to jump on a particular issue that the state is doing that is controversial, which is the tolls. We get a response from Dallas, seeking something of more consensus, where we actually, you know, probably do have agreement, I think we do have agreement on that piece. The response to that is more partisanship. I get attacked when I'm on this council, I've occasionally made jokes about the other party, in times where perhaps we're in a nonpartisan mood. But in attacking Mr. Dodge, we now go into an ad hominem attack on our governor, the worst polling, whatever, jumping into Wisconsin, for God's sake, which the class warfare of Wisconsin is sort of notable, and to the extent that this becomes marked with that, it shows this for what it is, which is simply sort of partisan politics. You've picked out the... I mean, I could respond, if you want to talk about, "Let's litigate legislative issues at the state level," we can talk about national issues, and I can talk about national policy and bring in, you know, other issues about what's going on in the world. What was, I actually did somewhat appreciate about Ms. Fay's proposal is that at least it tried to link it to West Hartford. I'm not sure I agree with the presumptions being made about what the impact of tolls would have on our streets. I think that is interesting, and it's something that we might want to look at in committee, as we do most things. And to study whether or not the impact of state policy would have an impact on here, we certainly know that it's going to be a huge impact as the Viaduct comes down. We are going to have traffic issues in town, that's what we're sort of elected to do, to work on those issues. So at least at that part, the proposal had some linkage. But now we're getting into Wisconsin and right-to-work, I mean, it's kind of showing a greater purpose in all this. We have a proposal on the table for Mr. Dodge that is one that, you know, fits within our realm, our expertise, but it's one that we have discussed in the past, if not specifically on that language, but in our committees, we've talked about the problems of infrastructure, and I support, therefore, I support that amendment. And I'd ask, again, we can have fun debates about this, about lots of these issues, but I'd suggest that, you know, that is what we've elected a governor for, that's what we've elected our legislators for, for that kind of stuff, where they actually have public hearings, and have discussions, and read debates, and have petitions to them about tolls. And I don't think it's, you know, necessarily an appropriate position for us to even be attempting to take with very limited information about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winograd. Yeah, Ms. Fay?
And I apologize to you, Dallas, I didn't... I'm very passionate about this, I really am, and I like you a lot, you know that. Yeah, so, I apologize, you know, I'm very, very, very steeped in this, I've been kind of living this, and just for the record, I do belong to the no-tolls Connecticut group, so I think I'm pretty close to it. But, be that as it may, gosh, I lost my train of thought here a little bit. Oh, the reason, honest to God, the reason that this came with suspending the rules, first of all, I'm learning the rules as we go, and I was just trying to be sensitive to the fact that the legislative session is closing. So, we don't have a lot of time to get this on the agenda, so I, this was not a political move, this was not strategic, this was not a scheme. I don't think that way. I think, I hope you guys have seen that, and I just wanted to make sure we addressed it and brought it forward, and if you look at the list of the 16 towns, we're in good company. A lot of towns have similar resolutions, I would argue, they're not as specific to the town as this one is, but there was no, you know, scheming behind of how to get this forward. I was just trying to do it because the session's closing with the legislature, and I felt it was important for a town like West Hartford to send a message, that's all. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear, and I think we also all can do our part to communicate better with each other and function better as a team. I think if I had the time, I maybe would have called Matt or something, done it a little bit differently, or perhaps you would have called me. So, anyway, I have some of the frustrations that everybody does with how the information flows go, and sometimes time is not in our favor, so I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, Ms. Fay, Mr. Williams.
I'll be brief, just to respond to Councilman Winograd, I mean, I didn't, there was no ad hominem attack on Dallas, I just went through the facts. Well, oh, well, the governor, there is polling, he's one of the least popular governors, that's not an attack, that's a statistical fact. I mean, that's, but I wasn't attacking Dallas. So, I just wanted to make sure that point was clear. I mean, we can have differences of opinion. But in terms of thinking of this as a partisan move, you know, other towns who are concerned about the tax implications and the infrastructure implications tolling is having on them are passing this resolution. And so, I think that's fair game, and certainly something worthy of consideration for this body in terms of our jurisdiction. So I did want to respond to that point. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
And I may respond.
Mr. Winograd?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Kids?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and you triggered me. But, no, I mean, listen, I do agree with you, that it is, in particular, as written, and I said, appropriate to raise that issue. I mean, I think at least that's germane. You went a little bit beyond on some of your comments, which came to me feeling like more a general attack, right, or more partisan, but certainly the tolls issue, you're right, there are other communities that have looked at it. I don't know how their process wise went. And again, I do think that Dallas's suggestion is a good one, again, to try to address the broader issue that we can agree on.
Thank you, Mr. Winograd. Mr. O'Leary, Ms. Kerrigan was saying you had something to say, no?
The question came up during the discussion, I can't remember who raised it, I think Ms. Fay may have mentioned the fact that I raised an FOI issue, and just because we're on television and the public may be out there with their little antenna going like this, just to put it on the record, what happened, as you all know but no one else knows, Ms. Fay sent an email to the members of the council, seeing the manager and myself on Sunday, asking who would like to cosponsor her resolution, and it went on to ask for, I think, your thoughts or words to that effect on the substance of the resolution. My concern upon reading that email was that what could end up happening is a serial conversation via email about the substance of the resolution, which would be, at least in the opinion of the Freedom of Information Commission, a form of meeting and not having been publicly noticed and not posted on the bulletin board would be a violation of the Act. So before anybody responded, I fired off a quick Mother's Day email of my own, saying, "Debate belongs at the council meeting on Tuesday night." So I just wanted to explain to anybody who's watching what the FOI issue was and how it really isn't an issue because nothing, no discussion then occurred. So, just wanted to clear the record up, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Okay. All right. Mr. Davidoff?
Mr. Williams, sorry.
So, just putting this out there, I assume the majority party doesn't have an interest in amending Mr. Dodge's amendment to include language essentially saying, "without raising or without implementing tolls." Just putting that out there, as an effort to meet a compromise.
So, I just want to weigh in, just that the process was that we had approved, and the agenda does get approved as a process, and at the end of the day, and had been approved and posted, and at that point, it becomes an issue that we can't amend, we have to take something on suspense after that. So that's how the amendment came on suspense, and we talked about how to bring that forward. So, and the discussion about the subject matter is absolutely appropriate at the table and public, and that's oftentimes when we, you know, we get something and we process, and, you know, I don't think Mr. Dodge had this done a week ago. I mean, I think this is something that was sort of accumulating his own thoughts and I will say that the town manager and I had the opportunity to go to a CCM presentation by the Department of Transportation, the commissioner, and, what was his name, Tony? He is the implementer of the...
He's the director, the department's director of planning.
The director, okay. And it was a more thorough explanation and factual sort of history of where we are and where we're going, and what our options are. So, and actually, it was very informative, and we would like to, one of the thought process was that we would refer this resolution to committee to be able to hear that report. We requested that report, and to share it with everybody at the table, but we didn't want to, we knew the time was of the essence, and for you, and we didn't want to just like kick it to committee to not, you know, be able to talk about it. But I think it's an important education, and if that flat out, after all the facts are in, and you don't believe them, and that is what it is, then that's fine, but I have not heard those facts that we heard in that report, and we don't have copies of it, so I don't want to just spew. It had resounding support in the room with selectmen of Republican towns and Democratic towns, and, again, nobody polled, but the questions were very poignant and accurate and based on fact, and I think that's what we're, some of what we're missing here. What are our options? And what are the facts? And what's going to happen if we, you know, if, you know, let's model these ideas out and see where it puts us, and have economic experts that are going to tell us what this means. So, and again, I'd love to share those facts and that presentation in committee. So I don't think this is the end of that discussion. I don't think we have the facts enough to vote in any way saying, "No tolls," because I don't know what that means. Do I support tolls? I don't know, because I don't have enough information. I will say, I don't support the infrastructure the way it is now, and I think that our state has serious fiscal concerns, and we need to make some very strategic decisions on how we're going to be able to compete. So I know that not only is it an economic, but we have, one fact that I did write down somewhere, was that there are 81 million hours of delay in our highways, and it equates to $1.9 billion in economic cost, and I do know that the quality of the air impacts all of us, too. So in addition to all the other things, I think that's an important thing that we have to deal with, and tolls are also something that is very different than when my husband's grandfather was a toll collector in Branford, and those, it was actually very, around the time when that horrible accident happened, and everybody was concerned about that. But I think, you know, there was not a sustainable path, and I couldn't agree with you more, that funding, I voted for a lockbox, I will always vote for a lockbox, I think transportation money stays in transportation money, and what we were told at that presentation, which again, is, you have to take the whole package because you can't just piecemeal, that tolls is actually the only way to restrict funds that come in to repair those roads. But I hope that we can have, get that presentation, and have that discussion, and educate everybody on what the options are for us, so whether it's the planning person to come in, or whether it's the actual presentation that we can get, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to pursue that. They have not released the presentation as of yet, the DOT has not released the presentation they made to CCM, but we'll pursue it, and if you want to refer the issue to committee, we'll assist with your discussion.
Okay. Any other?
So the motion is to amend the resolution?
So the motion would be to amend the resolution. There's nothing in here that I disagree with, and I think this is a great starting point. I mean, so...
I guess just as procedure for Mr. O'Leary, we will first vote to amend the resolution, and assuming that we're successful, then we would vote separately to vote on the resolution as amended.
Correct. The motion to amend is the motion before you now, and you would vote on the amendment. And then, having voted on the amendment, essentially because it's a strike-all, you're voting on it a second time, but yes.
Okay, so the motion's on the table, so we'll make them call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, on the resolution itself, right, on the amended resolution, right? All those in favor?
Madam Mayor, I would just ask that the vote on the amended resolution be taken by roll.
Motion's been made, a second, all those in favor? I mean, have been taken by roll?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, approval called. Yes.
Mr. Davidoff?
Yes.
Mr. Dodge?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
No.
Ms. Kerrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney's absent. Mr. Winograd?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
No.
Okay. So, but in addition to that, the suspended amended resolution, we also will put this on a finance and budget agenda item to go over as well, right? Okay, thank you. All right. Reports from the town manager, 7A.
Thank you, Mayor. My report's in the board docs document, I'll just hit a few highlights. First, under Council Business and Meetings, Community Planning Committee will meet tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. We're going to be rescheduling next week's meeting of the ad hoc Subcommittee on Economic Development. Finance and Budget will meet on Wednesday, the 22nd, at 6:00 p.m., and Human Services will meet on Thursday, the 23rd, at 8:00 a.m. Moving on to staff reports. Moving on to staff reports, I'd like to congratulate Liz Hewitt for her appointment as the West Hartford Public Schools Director of Finance and Planning. Liz will be replacing Chip Ward, who's had a stellar career with the district. Liz has had a fabulous career of her own with the town, I think she'll prove to be a real asset to the district, and will be able to continue to take advantage of her historical knowledge here. So, congratulations to Liz, wishing her all the best in her new role. Moving on, another employee I'd like to acknowledge, Kristen Gorski, our Economic Development Specialist. She was recently received an honorable mention as a community favorite in economic development at the Connecticut Entrepreneur Awards. What I think is exceptional about this, she was the only local government employee to receive this, this award. Everyone else was either a developer or, or in that business. So, congratulations to Kristen. Moving on, I sent an email to the council to this effect. The town, we've scheduled a public information session, public information session that will be run by staff for 7:00 PM on June 6th, here in this room. And the, the subject of the session will be our upcoming stormwater study that you have funded over the next two fiscal years. And the area of the study, as you will recall, is generally the north central part of town. We will be specifically inviting representatives of the Lynbrook neighborhood to this public information session. Next item, I wanted to mention that our police department is very careful to monitor what we label as contemporary issues. Several months ago, after he started, our new police chief, Vernon Riddick, added this subject to the police department's weekly staff meeting as a recurring, recurring agenda item. And the purpose of this agenda item is to provide police department personnel with an opportunity to talk about hot-button issues in law enforcement. And some of the things they've recently discussed include pursuits, use of force, open carry, protests, and race relations. And as they discuss these items, the department reviews its policies and procedures to see whether or not anything needs to be amended or additional training provided. So, the department did continue this practice as it relates to two very high-profile incidents which recently occurred within our state. So, the police department is, is well aware of those issues and is reviewing our policies and procedures that relate to that. So, I want to make sure the, the council is aware, and we will continue to keep the council apprised in public safety committee meetings. Moving on, we're in the construction season, there's a lot of paving happening throughout town, we're resurfacing a portion of Fern Street right now, the section, the section that runs from North Main to Troutbrook Drive, and we should be completing the repaving next week on the 21st and 22nd. And then we have three local streets that we're repaving right now, a section of Boulevard from Quaker to Whiting Lane, Brookline Drive, and Arlington Road. So, those are the items that I wish to highlight, Mayor. Happy to take any questions council members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions for Mr. Hart? Mr. Davidoff?
Mr. Hart, I just want to confirm, the next finance and budget meeting is going to be at 6:30, I believe, I think we received a late email today, instead of 6 o'clock, as in your...
I stand corrected, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff, I was going to say that. Ms. Kerrigan, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to comment, on, on Facebook, Chief Riddick is putting out these, kind of it's 10 o'clock, do you know where your children are? Which, as I think about it now, maybe it was just a reminder to parents that they had kids that weren't home, I'm not too sure. But anyways, I just think it's phenomenal. I don't know where the idea, you know, came from, but it's being well-received, and I think it's, it's 10 o'clock, you know, your car's locked, that type of thing, so, very humorous, I love it.
It reminds me...
Kudos to him.
Yeah, no, it's great, and it reminds us all to lock up and go to bed. 9 o'clock.
Thank you, I will pass that on.
All right. Anything else for the town manager? No? Okay. With that, I'll go to announcements. Bike-to-Work Day, Center for Latino Progress and BiSci Company will hold a West Hartford Bike-to-Work Day on the, on Friday morning, May 17th, meet at BiSciCoWest616 New Park for coffee, then cyclists will head it at 7:15 for the short six-and-a-half-mile ride on bike paths and quiet streets to Bike-to-Work festivities at Hartford State House Square, no fee to participate. Neighbors from around the world join to hear personal stories told by immigrants and very different experiences Thursday, May 16th, 6:30 to 8:30 at the Noel Webster Library. It is a free event for everybody. Public Works Open House will be held on Saturday, May 18th, 9 to 1, at its 17 Brixton Street facility, in honor of National Public Works Week, I didn't have that proclamation, anyway. Children can play in the big trucks, adults can safely shred confidential papers and get all their recycling questions answered. You'll also see the 2019 poster contest winners from local Girl Scout troops. Attendees can enter a free drawing for five yards of landscaping mulch from their choice from Supreme Force products. Also, there will be a free bulky and metal waste pickup, attendees are encouraged to bring a nonperishable food item for the food pantry. Flags on veterans' graves, help is needed for the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend at 8:30, if you can help. It's the Fairview Cemetery is at 200 Whitman Avenue, please contact Renee McHugh, bring a screwdriver or similar tool to aid in planting of the flags, although I think the ground is quite wet. Memorial Day Parade is Monday, May 27th, at 10:00 AM. Visit the westhartfordct.gov Memorial Day Parade, or call Renee McHugh, or email Renee. This year's grand marshal is John Danaher, a 97-year-old Bronze Star World War II veteran. The Memorial Day Ceremony will be laying up the wreaths, the keynote speaker is Captain Joseph Sandborn of Wreaths Across America. Town manager and US Army veteran Matt Hart will serve as emcee, and Reverend Dana Lee Hallenbach, who used to be our public works director and formerly also on the police department, will give the invocation. Other speakers include a student from the Witness Stones Project, and I will also have a few comments, too. So, American Legion recognizes students entering the military on Tuesday, May 28th, at 6:00 PM. The ceremony will be at Town Hall Auditorium, recognizing high school seniors who will be entering military or ROTC programs in the fall. 16 students will be recognized. Politicant Police and Citizens Awards will take place on May 29th at 5:00 PM in 314 at Town Hall, that's this room, and residents who assisted the police department will also be recognized. 33rd Annual Celebrate, West Hartford Road Race, it's time to dust off the sneakers and get ready to participate in the most family-friendly running event in the region. It is on June 2nd, that's Sunday, the Kid Fund will start at 8:00 AM, and the 5K begins at 8:30. Register by May 22nd to guarantee a race, to get a race shirt. Go to celebrate. Any other announcements from anybody? No? Okay. Reports from Corporation Council?
First of all, I'd like to apologize for coughing and sneezing my way through this meeting, this is the result of my rash decision to mow my lawn yesterday.
I was going to say...
And it's despite taking Claritin, antihistamine eye drops, and a steroid nasal spray, so this is as good as it gets, I apologize.
And you need to try acupuncture.
I'm gonna need to try like a surgical mask or something.
Yeah, it is good.
It's brutal, but I have no formal report, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Corporation Council? Okay. Appointments, we have, I move that we appoint Kate Hamilton to the Commission on Veterans Affairs for a term ending 12/31/2022. John Harris appointed as alternate member to Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending 12/31/2022, and Lynn Reynolds reappointed to the Housing Authority for a term ending 20/31/2024.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, Ms. Kerrigan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move adoption on the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Make a motion to adjourn?
Seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.